We call the regular meeting of the Upstate County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of the January 10th, 2013 Upstate County Commission meeting.
The County Commission of Upstate County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, January 10, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tanny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tanny Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, William Parker County Administrator, Megan Palmeri Assistant County Administrator, and Jacqueline Denklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of January 3, 2013, with a correction of typographical errors. William Parker provided a review of Notice of Public Hearing Amendment to Enhanced 911 Ordinance, 11:00 a.m. on Thursday, February 14, 2013. The proposed amendment will increase the monthly surcharge of $2.65 to $4.50 for residential customers and to $6.50 for business and Centrex customers. The adjustment of fees is necessary due to decreased revenues resulting from the reduction of landline usage as well as increased costs to provide the service. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the advertisement for the public hearing. William Parker advised that Agenda Item Number Two concerning the approval of the usage of sick time earned as Deputy Sheriff by Virgil Miller to be credited to Public Employees' Retirement System Service Credit was not ready for action at this time and will be addressed later in this meeting or placed on a future agenda. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the leave donation request from Stacy Truman, Assistant Case Manager, for the Lewis Upsher Braxton Community Corrections and Day Report Center, effective December 2012. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the documentation which authorizes the office of the Upstate County Assessor and the West Virginia State Tax Department Property Tax Division to correct valuations for real property, personal property, and/or mineral accounts. Any adjustment made after February 1, 2013 must be forwarded to the Commission sitting as the Board of Review and Equalization with an effective date of January 10, 2013 through the date of adjournment of the Board of Review and Equalization, tentatively February 27, 2013. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the change of employment status of Joyce Wall as part-time E-911 dispatcher to full-time E-911 dispatcher, effective January 13, 2013, at the rate of $10 per hour. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the termination of employment of Selena Gooden as part-time E-911 dispatcher, as recommended by Steve Linger, E-911 Communications Center Director, as Gooden quit without notice in December. William Parker provided a review/Status Report on West Virginia Development Office Small Cities Block Grant, Adrian Public Service Water Line Extension Project. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the contract with the West Virginia Development Office concerning the Small Cities Block Grant Project Number 10 SCGB0035 in the amount of $700,000. A representative of Danny Stump, Jr., FERS wrecker service, appeared before the Commission to request to be added to the E-911 wrecker rotation. William Parker advised that paperwork had been reviewed and requirements have been met. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the request. The Commission reviewed the following for your information items. Number one, minor boundary annexation application and governing statute, West Virginia Armory National Guard location, Upstate County Wellness Complex and related property for utility right-of-way in the Brushy Fork area, hearing at 10:30 a.m. on Thursday, 1/24/2013. Number two, notification from Helen Phillips Assessor regarding compliance with Section 11-13-15B pertaining to business personal property letters. Number three, notification from the IRS on increase in mileage rates. Number four, monthly building permit reports. Number five, Upstate County E-911 Communication Center reports as listed. Number six, agendas and/or notices of meetings as listed. Number seven, meeting minutes and/or financial reports as listed. Number eight, Board of Equalization and Review as listed. Number nine, meetings as listed. Number 10, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following exonerations and/or refunds as listed. The Commission approved the following request to attend meetings as listed. The Commission approved the following time out of office for Commission employees as listed. The Commission approved the following consolidation of land tracts as listed. With no further business, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission meeting adjourned at 11:30 a.m. Commissioners J.C. Rafferty and Troy Brady attended the meeting of the Upstate County Policy Board at 1:00 p.m. Commissioner Troy Brady attended the meeting of the Upstate County Department Supervisor since 2:00 p.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? Not unasked or motion to be approved as such?
I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Okay, we have a proclamation, this time National Stalking Awareness Month. Are you our proclaimer?
Yes.
Okay, step right up.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Samantha Dalton with Women's Aid in Crisis. I'm the sexual assault advocate for Upstate and Barber County. January is Stalking Awareness Month, and right now I'm going to read the proclamation that we asked that you all signed. Whereas under the laws of all 50 states, the District of Columbia and the federal government's stalking is a crime. Whereas 3.4 million individuals age 18 and older are victims of stalking in the United States per year. Whereas many stalking victims are forced to protect themselves by relocating, changing their identities, changing jobs, and obtaining protection orders. Whereas many stalkers use increasingly sophisticated devices, GPS cameras, computer spyware to track their victims. Whereas there is a need for public awareness about the nature of criminality and potentially lethality of stalking. Whereas laws and public policies must be continually adapted to keep pace with new tactics used by the stalkers. Whereas Women's Aid in Crisis is joining forces with the victim services providers, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Upstate County and the United States to observe National Stalking Awareness Month and to promote the theme stalking know it, name it, stop it. And I do have some information that I'd like to share with you all. I'm just going to hand that to you if that'll...is that okay?
Fine. Okay, do we have a motion that we approve? The proclamation that was just read?
I'll move so.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, would you all like to get a picture of who was here with the proclamation? If you all like to come out behind us and...
We have a couple of...
All right, good, and I'll finish signing later. All right, thank you ladies.
Thank you.
Can I send over to Mr. Parker? Okay, our next item of business is David Harrington Coffin, Sheriff of Upstate County. A poising of Deputy Sheriff. Would you like to step up Sheriff? I'll give you the podium.
Gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning Sheriff.
Ladies. I have a couple of things that I feel it's important to bring to your attention this morning. We all know that we've been without a pro officer at the high school. And to me, it's been very important to fill that position as quickly as possible. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention that Deputy Rocky Heb will be leaving road, the road work, and he'll be moving to the high school effective February 1. Which creates another issue for the Sheriff's Department. We're going to go out the backfield for his position as soon as possible.
But it's a good issue.
We'll cross that bridge when we get there. But we had, we felt it was important to get somebody up there.
It's a good issue to have because of the importance of having an officer at the high school.
Second thing that I have, we had a, we've had a young lady by the name of Sharon M. O'Hurd. She is a West Virginia Wesleyan college student. She has came to, came to us back in October. She did applications, and she's requesting the opportunity to do an internship with the Sheriff's Department. I don't think she's officially on the agenda today. Is that correct Willie?
That's correct. What I told the Sheriff is unless you would have any disagreement, she could go ahead and start, and then we could just approve it next week back to a retroactive date.
Her daughter is a friend of my granddaughter's at the high school. I know her to be a fine lady. She is a veteran of the United States Navy. So you're getting someone who's experienced and is interested in law enforcement and corrections. So I think she'll be an asset to you if we approve it.
If there's no objections there, then we'll put it on next week's agenda and make it a formal approval then. Okay.
I have, I need your, this was, is her application?
Yes, I do have a copy of that.
You gentlemen want to see your list?
Thank you. Thank you Sheriff.
Thank you.
The most important issue I have this morning is that we're, we're ready to move forward with a new hire for Deputy Sheriff, with your blessing. I brought a young man with me this morning. Step up Mitchell. This young man is James Mitchell Kennedy. He has fulfilled all the requirements by West Virginia Code. And with your blessing, I'd like to bring him on board to make him a new Deputy Sheriff. I believe he'll be a great asset to our county. His father's here. His father is a long-term law enforcement officer in Arishon County. So I, I think, well, I'm anxious with your blessing to bring, to get him started and teach him the ropes.
Any questions before we approve the Sheriff's recommendation? Not, then I'd ask for a motion that we approve the recommendation of hiring.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Welcome aboard.
Thank you Sheriff.
Good luck too.
Good luck in your career. Speaks well that you wish to follow a career your father's chosen.
Okay, I believe that's all I have this morning.
Okay, well...
The effective date of that is January, according to the letter, January 27th, at a starting salary of 1,550 per hour.
Okay.
And then, once successful completion of the academy, it'll increase to 16. And then after the year's probation, it'll be reviewed for a rate at that time.
Do we have an approximate date when the next academy?
March 2050 if everything goes correct. He'll be in the academy from March 25th through July 12th.
Very good.
Sounds good. Thanks a lot. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you Sheriff.
Okay, our next scheduled appointment is at 9:45 with Terry Gould, Manager at Tenegon Public Service District. But in the meantime, we have some other items, first being approval, approved Notice of Public Hearing Amendment to Enhance 911 Ordinance, 11:00 a.m. on Thursday, February 21st, 2013, increase in current monthly fee of $2.65 residential to $2.45, or $4.50, and business Centrex $6.50. And that is because of a change in the hearing date that we set last week. So that new date will be February 21st, 2013, at 11:00 a.m. in this very office.
I would need a approval from the Commission. We had an issue of meeting the publication timelines for the record. That is the reason for the change in date.
Okay.
Is why we had to do that and since it was...
Have a motion to approve that change in the hearing date?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Next item is consider approval on usage of sick time, 120 days earned as Deputy Sheriff by Virgil D. Miller to be credited Public Employees Retirement System as Service Credit. We have a letter on page four from Mr. Miller asking for that, making that request.
I did copy the current policy and placed that on the agenda. This was adopted back in January 10th, 2008, at that point. And basically, as I understand and interpret the policy, elected officials, if they had previous service as a full-time employee, could use a certain amount of time for service credit for retirement purposes. Or current full-time employees that may be elected to a position after adoption of this policy. In either case, at the adoption of the policy, there was a clause put in, within 90 days of policy adoption or election, an elected official would need to submit sufficient documentation and verification of the unused leave balance to the Upstate County Commission for inclusion in the official minutes. And then it goes on and talks about if there's insufficient payroll records, about a sworn affidavit. There's three or four individuals at the adoption, at the time of the adoption of this policy, that could have, you know, been affected. Nobody, to my knowledge and review, has filed that documentation within the 90-day period.
So based on the policy, this request, plus if requests are made from any of the other elected officials who follow the policy, then we won't be able to honor that request. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Your thoughts gentlemen?
During the period of April of '80 to December of '88, what would the accrual of sick leave have been per pay period?
I think it was the same as we have now. I have to go back and double check. I do know at that time period, they had a maximum, a maximum limit of 120 days. That's how the 120 days was arrived at, is they had a maximum that they could earn at that time. There is no maximum at this point.
But they accrued how much per pay period?
5.5 hours as far as I know, 18 days a year, to my recollection.
Thank you.
Which is the current accrual.
Okay, so what's your thoughts? We're going to follow our policy or we're going to...
I think we need to follow our policy. If we don't, then there's no need to have our policy.
I concur.
Agree?
I concur.
Okay.
I'll communicate to the Office of the County Clerk that there was no action to approve this request. This is the last item as it relates to this individual for paperwork being submitted to the Public Employees Retirement System.
Okay, very good. Okay, we have a little bit more time before 9:45, so the next item is resignation of April D. Smith, 911 dispatcher, effective January 24th, 2013.
And we received a letter. It's, "Dear Sir, with deepest regret to inform you that I'm resigning as a Upstate County 911 dispatcher. My last day will be January 24th, 2013. Thank you for the opportunity to work for Upstate County."
Okay. She's been with us for quite some time, hasn't she?
Seven years.
Seven. Yep, well...
I will try and get a hold of her and see if, as you gentlemen have expressed a desire in the past, if they would like to have an exit interview.
Exit interview, that's good.
I'll try and make that contact and see if she would want to do that or not.
Okay, that'd be good. In the meantime, we have a motion that we accept her resignation?
I'll make that.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Okay, next item is budget revision, General County and Coal Severance Fund.
The Commission has a, all the detail, the press just has the, prints the copy of the revision. But starting with Coal Severance, which is the smaller of the two paperwork-wise and dollar-wise, it's basically bringing in the additional carryover balance as of July 1st into the budget line item. We had budgeted for Coal Severance a $75,000 carryover. It actually was $198,084, which is an increase, you know, showed in the budget increase of just over $123,000. And you'll see on the detail, I've added that to utilities, postage, and supplies is where those different items went. In fact, we had neglected to budget any, any funds in postage. That was an oversight on my part when we did the budget, but it was already in Charleston. And I knew we could take care of it, that care of it as a carryover amount at that point. So unless there would be questions on that item, and there's, be ready for approval by the Commission to...
Any questions on that? Basically where it's coming from and where it's going to? Not, do we have a motion to approve the budget change revision?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, next.
General County is other budget revision, starting with the fund balance, unassigned fund balance, which is what I call the carryover. We had budgeted $250,000 in the original budget, the actual carryover as of July 1st, which I was quite confident would be higher than that, and it was. It was $754,138, a difference of just over $500,000. The others is bringing $6,150 of federal grant money into the budget, an additional $31,550 of state grants, which mainly come into the County Commission. Most of that is community partnership grants and the records management preservation, $10,000 for the Office of the Circuit Clerk. $27,050 in refunds reimbursement. The vast majority of that is the cruiser that was totaled by a deputy, the, just over $22,000 of insurance reimbursement from that, and then some other minor insurance reimbursements. The 911 fee reimbursement, I'm decreasing that revenue line item by $200,000. We had budgeted $750 for General County. We're not going to have that total reimbursement this year. So I would decrease that by $200,000 down to $550. Payroll reimbursements increased to $15,500. $11,800 of that is for the Solid Waste Authority, where you gentlemen agreed, or the gentleman at that time, agreed to be the payroll conduit for the Solid Waste Authority. And then there's a small amount as it relates to the worthless check account. When we had an individual in the worthless check account that came in after the budget was approved, they've since left that position, and it has not been filled. So that's total revenue of $384,388 of additional revenue. Under the County Commission, 401 area, additional $57,500. And the detail shows you where that went to. $30,000 of that is for audit. We're having two audits this year versus one. So we had budgeted for one, we're having two, two-year fiscal year audits, so increasing that, as well as the state grants that we brought in, the community partnership grants. The Circuit Clerk, additional $17,250. $10,000 of that is state grants. The remainder is from the carryover, and that is for his project of scanning and imaging old records. And the Commission agreed to go above the $10,000 to complete a certain time period of those records. The Sheriff, 404 Treasurer Tax Office Account, the net is decreasing that office by $2,950, moving money around to his other budget line items, mainly to the 700 account from the insurance line item in that account, because the newly-elected Sheriff is not on our county insurance. He's stayed with insurance from his previous, where he retired previously. The Assessor, just increasing that $500. We were low on the estimate of the salary supplements by a few bucks, just over 400, so increasing that by 500. 412 is the Extension Service Office, increasing that by $25,000. And that is repairs that's going to be made to the building where the individual ran into the building. And we will be receiving insurance reimbursement for the majority, if not all of that, but that has not happened yet. So they're still taking care of finalizing the paperwork on that.
Any, any, any estimated time in that apparel to be made? It's been there for several months now.
Yeah, I've talked to Mr. Harris, and the holdup in getting it accomplished is, the first estimate we had was $6,000. And Mr. Harris said, "There's no way that can be done for $6,000." So we questioned that estimate. That gentleman was contacted, gave a bid, and hadn't even visited the location. So we were, they asked us to go out and solicit, you know, a couple of local contractors, and it took a while to get that accomplished. We have that bid. It's $19,000, $20,000 in that neighborhood right now. And the insurance is finalizing their agreement with that. And Mr. Harris said, you know, it's, he would rather wait till the spring to get that accomplished at this point, so they don't have to tarp or heat or anything along those lines on the stone work.
And then there was some problem finding stone to match.
Problem finding the stone to match, and they found the best available that they could. And so there was a couple of issues that led to that delay. Uh, 415, magistrate court, that $3,700 is the worthless check, uh, payroll that we, we had not budgeted anything, and that's just covering the expense we had. 424 in the courthouse, uh, just under 89,500, and that's various line items, uh, supplies, professional services, postage, uh, utilities, uh, which total 89,478. Law enforcement, uh, sheriff 700 is, uh, total of 58,110 adding, uh, shifting around some, uh, payroll funds, uh, as he's requested in the past and advised the commission at that time, about 30,000 there. Insurance, uh, of 10,000, and then some other payroll-related expense, as well as, uh, 5,000 of additional for supply line item. Uh, the regional jail, I added 120,000 in the, that line item, and our, excuse me, our fiscal year-to-date average has just been over 56,000, and that doesn't appear to be going down anytime soon. We've started out 62, 64,000, went down some, now we're, last month I think it was 54. The average has been 56. So hopefully we won't spend all that, but that money's there now, and if that average continues, uh, the budget will, will handle that. 711 is the Office of Emergency Services. That's, uh, some federal dollars that we'd spent on a project from last year disclosing out one of the hazard mitigation grant programs, 2,950. 808, Solid Waste Authority, 11,800 is the payroll-related expense for the part-time position. That will be there through, through this fiscal year. And then the 964, Social Services, is Project Lifesaver, $1,000 of additional repair equipment supply line item, and those total 384,388.
Okay, any questions on that aspect of the budget revision? Not an ask for a motion to approve those changes?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carried. Well, we still have five minutes for our next scheduled appointment, so we have some, uh, informational items. First thing, uh, minor boundary annexation application governing statute, West Virginia National Guard, uh, art location, Upstate County Wellness Complex and related property for utility right-of-way, and the Brushy Pork Area hearing at 10:30 a.m. on Thursday, January the 24th.
That has been in the, uh, record data, legal ad, uh, has required the past two weeks, as well as the postings in the annex, in the area to be annexed. Which they were all rather tightly grouped since it's basically two properties.
Okay, next item is notification from Oilfield Trucking Solutions, Chesapeake Energy Corporation regarding facility closure per terms of workers' adjustment and retraining notification act. Pages five and six, re-agenda. Gonna be losing some employees.
About 50.
50?
At least 50, it says here.
Well, I think that's by statute, they have to use that number.
Yeah, actually their exhibit A says there's one administrative assistant, one dispatcher, one driver train, or two driver trainers, maintenance technician, one team leader, and 23 truck drivers. The total of that number would be 29.
Plus previous ones that were left.
Yeah. So, um, with the, um, decrease in the price of natural gas and, uh, moving north and Pennsylvania and Ohio for the gas that's more profitable at present prices, then we're seeing some reduction in employment in this area. So that's a notification that required to, um, to make. So, um... We have correspondence from Region 7, paying and development council regarding 2013 Small Cities Block Grant Program application timelines on page seven, and we have our, well, it's just director here, Mr. Shane White here, and, uh, do you have anything you'd like to add to this, uh, notification, just that people need to get the information?
Yeah, it's an annual thing we do every year when we find out the deadline, and it's just an informational case you have, and just submitting another project paperwork. We submit it out to all of our member governments, make them aware of the deadline.
And then it's, I assume it's up to the, the ones who've submitted last year that didn't receive approval then to, for them to notify you that they want to resubmit?
Correct. And we make those contacts anyway, just out of courtesy and obviously out of the timeline, to make sure we meet the timeline.
Right.
See if they want to resubmit, because there's some additional information we need to follow up on before we submit that application, to see if any changes have been made or addressing the issue just maybe.
Right. And usually how many years does it take for the applications to be submitted before they receive funding, any funding, even if it's the engineering?
Uh, I've seen the first year, the applications that have been submitted get funded, and I've seen them wait eight, nine years.
The average is probably what, five or six years?
Five, six.
Yeah.
For small cities funded, yeah.
Right. It's probably gonna get longer with the lower amount of funds available and the more requests.
Yeah, all, all the projects that were funded in Region 7 this year were not new projects. They were, they start split funding projects, and others they award so much the first year, and then based upon progress, they'll commit the following money the next year when you actually need it, rather than throwing all of the money at once and you just sit on it for a couple of years. They just kind of order it as an ad me basis, depending on the progress, so all of, we got four, I believe, awarded this past year, and none of them were new projects.
All of them?
Resubmissioned.
Right.
And obviously received either a design grant or had, had at least half the money committed from previous years, and we're just getting the rest of it.
And we're probably gonna see more and more like what happened with, uh, AD and PSD, where they're actually not gonna be giving them all the requests for Small Cities Block Grant, and then they're gonna have to go out and look for either borrowing more money or, that's probably what it's coming down to, is borrowing more money because the grant money's turning into loan money. Okay, well, it's 15 P. L., thanks for helping move that clock along there, Shane. Okay, so we have Terry Gold, manager of Tenerton Public Service District and representative from Thrasher Engineering, requests boundary adjustment for sewer service in Lawrence area. So you'd like to step up?
Good morning, and thank you very much for the time here. Let me start explaining that, uh, when the Obama money come available, we made application to Tenerton to the USDA Rural Development for money to product, fund this project. It was earmarked. We proceeded with the project with Thrasher Engineering, we've got preliminary engineering drawn up. Money is earmarked for the project, and it was discovered that we were putting a sewer project in an area that we did not have jurisdiction in. In research, we go back and find at a public, at a Upstate County hearing, June the 8th, 1995, which was at the time, Tenerton PSD relinquished the Brushy Pork Area so the city could put sewer down Brushy Pork. We were not in any attendance. Nobody from the PSD was at that meeting. Not only did they enlarge the boundary for Tenerton, I mean, uh, for the city of Buchanan, for Brushy Pork area, they took in the entire western portion of the county. So now that we have a project underway, we're asking, it's a $4 million project, and it will pick up sewer in the entire, I'll let Dave Watson, Thrasher Engineering, explain the project. It's been preliminary engineered, so we're asking the commission to readjust that boundary that was adjusted in 1995. And Dave will explain the area that we're taking in, and I, Willie knows the procedure here, but, uh, our attorney has given us a dossier that the Upstate County Commission, upon its own motion, by order, can duly adopt this procedure, make that boundary change. And he's given us a copy of the West Virginia Code that explains that. So it, uh, falls upon the commission to help us out here with this boundary adjustment. If, for example, you don't go along, there's two other methods by which it can be made, upon recommendation of, by the Public Service Commission, or a petition signed by 25% of the people. We're hoping that we don't have to go that route. We've, uh, expended several dollars in this project already.
How many customers are in this project, Terry?
Approximately, Dave?
Approximately 140.
140 customers? And is, is all the area or just part of it?
Just, uh, Dave has boundary adjustments, just part, we're asking just part, part of it, just what we're going to be.
Part of it's in, is in yours and part of it, some of it's not, is that correct?
None of it's in our area.
Oh, none of it's in your area?
None of it's.
Okay. If you'd like to step up and...
We're just hoping we can get this settled and move on with our project.
Okay.
I'm Dave Watson from Thrasher Engineering, and, uh, I'm gonna give you all a map so we know exactly where we're talking about here. It's the area north of 33, uh, near the Farm Bureau. It's the area east, uh, north of 33 towards the county line. It's the area outlined in green, and, uh, Thrasher Engineering prepared that document you're looking at, and there's also a description that goes along with that, and that would be to include the, to bring that area back into Tenerton PSD's boundaries. And, uh, currently Hodgesville PSD, I believe, provides water in that same area. As Terry mentioned, it's a sewer project, approximately $4 million to provide sewer to 140 customers approximately in Lawrence, Red Rock, and the County Route 12 areas. A small portion of it would be in Lewis County, just as, as be cost-effective to pick up that extra few homes there, because they could grab it into the system. It's proposed to be funded with a loan and grant through USDA Rural Development, and a portion of the project would also be funded through the State Infrastructure Council, and everything would be, uh, is proposed to be extended off the existing Buchanan system, and ultimately treatment would be provided by the city of Buchanan. We've prepared a preliminary engineering report, submitted it to USDA Rural Development, and the area has also been cleared environmentally. A phase one study was conducted, uh, Tenerton paid for that study, and a public meeting has also been held at a time in the past, and I've also have minutes, a sign-in sheet from that public meeting that was held in, uh, Lawrence.
When was that held? What's the date on that?
September 22nd, 2010. I got a copy of the newspaper ad that... There's also a sign-in sheet from that meeting.
So, uh, what would you estimate the, the timing that this project, that the funding could be available and the project could, would be completed or started?
Once the boundary is sorted out and back into Tenerton's boundaries, we could, uh, pursue with the design. We've had it flown. We haven't had it detailed mapped yet, but it's been flown. It could be designed by fall, submitted to the Public Service Commission, and of course you have right-of-ways to obtain. You're looking at the spring of next year, uh, to bid it, hopefully get it under construction by summer.
As far as the funding process?
Yeah, and the, you would, we'd have to, we could pursue, move forward with the design, uh, without all of the funding in place, but we, we looked, we'd have to resubmit to the Infrastructure Council for their portion.
Okay, so you're estimated a year, a little over a year? Okay, any, uh, any questions here? We have some folks in the city.
I contacted, uh, Michael Doss with, with the city and also, uh, Shane White here with Region 7, because I knew there was some other projects somewhere in that area or planning, uh, at least planning for projects. I don't know where those stand, and those agencies can speak to those as well. Uh, in the past, I know we've had discussion on this area, the city, then Tenerton, then the city, and then back to Tenerton, I think, and so that's why I invited the other agencies here. I don't know if they're prepared to offer any information or input at this point, but... And I'm sure there's a, if you gentlemen are so inclined to explore this, I, I have to pull out the code, but I know there's public notice requirements and et cetera.
Right.
To accomplish the task.
Well, now let me ask you a question. Does your proposed extension here, then, would it, would it come off of, of an existing line belonging to who?
Uh, the city of Buchanan.
And then, then back to Tenerton PSD. Tenerton PSD operates to approximately out to the old Swinton Division, and then the city has a line that goes out to, uh, approximately Hampton End. So we can then walk with the city right in between these two.
And then it would connect in that area of Hampton End?
Connect that line approximately at Red Rock.
Okay.
And as I understand it, Mr. Ludlow couldn't be here today, he's out of the area, uh, and that's been, I, I know it was at least his concern of, you go from the city to Tenerton, back to the city, back to the Tenerton, and to get some kind of consistent plan in the area.
Well, I know we've discussed that, where there's a section there, there's been a lot of discussion on that, where, uh, Tenerton operates a section in between the Buchanan on both ends.
I'd say you had us a problem there.
Well, is there someone from the city that would like, that has some comments or que, or comments they'd like to make? Step up there, Ken.
I'm gonna provide you one more. I'm gonna, I'm gonna provide you one more thing, is a description of the boundary adjustment that goes along with that.
Okay.
The only thing I might add, our attorney has said that if the Upstate County Commission adopts such an order, it will then do the following, picks a date for the hearing, gives the Public Service Commission a copy of the order notice of hearing, gives the Lewis County Commission notice of order of hearing, and publish a notice of the hearing. That was all that we required by the county.
Right, so they're saying they would, they would do that?
You all, you can follow those, and you can update this boundary adjustment.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Kenny.
Kenny Davidson, Mayor of Buchanan. And we're a little bit hamstrung here today with Sam Ludlow being our expert, and he's in Nepal, his brother-in-law passed away, and we anticipate him being back here on Tuesday. But there are a number of issues relative to this, and we certainly are supportive of serving the community. Hopefully, we serve the community in the best way possible. We have taken steps to, we're in the process of selecting a engineer, we're taking requests for qualifications, is that the right word? And through tomorrow, and we'll be interviewing within the next week or so, selecting an engineer for the project we propose. I wonder what earmarked means in terms of money. Certainly, if there's money on the table for a comprehensive project out that way, I think we ought to really work together to try to make that happen. And, but we, we do have some concerns about the operation, and Sam could tell you in better detail what, what that involves. And I would certainly hope you wouldn't make any decision before we got Sam back in the country and we could hear what the real issues are. I'm not the engineer, I'm not the expert, but I thank you for your time.
I can add one thing to the earmarked situation. USDA is pushing us because of the timing of being involved with this project. The money is there, and they're pushing us to get the project started so that it can be allocated, but the money is there for the project.
Do you have a commitment for the money? Has your project been approved, and you have a commitment for the money from the USDA?
Yes, and you...
Officially been committed, but it is, they know about it, and there's a amount of it here for the project.
Shane, you have any comments, or this point, or?
Sure.
Region Seven's perspective, we were approached actually by Steve Foster in regards to some economic development issues out at Fink Run, and he told us to get in contact with the city in preparing a project, or developing a project to provide sewer out there. And as the mayor mentioned, we are in the process of procuring for engineering services, and our office has been assisting the city in doing that. And closing date for receiving proposals is tomorrow, and like the mayor said, we'll be shortlisting those proposals to start the interview process and then go from there. So, and that's our involvement as far as Region Seven's concerned.
Based on the request from the Development Authority?
Yeah.
Now, this, the area that you're talking about, is that exactly the same area that the tenants proposed?
It overlaps the area.
From the look at the map, yeah.
When you say overlaps the area, the service area, or are, does your project plan on providing service?
The projects overlapping the area that we're asking to be adjusted.
Okay. Your current project that you're looking at, will it provide service to the Finks Run locations that Region Seven is working on?
I don't know what they're, I have no idea.
Are you, are you crossing the corridor?
Yes.
The Fink Run Road, that new construction area, is where we're, is where Region Seven and the city have been looking at, and...
And I know my, my initial discussions with Sam before we started the procurement process, is he had interest in other areas to serve along Brushy Fork and also along 33, so.
On out Brushy Fork farther, you mean?
Yeah.
Which is not, which is not part of this, your progress project, correct?
If they're talking that the Finks run along Quarter H, yes, it is.
But not out Brushy Fork?
Not Brushy Fork. That's where the whole problem began way back when. This, this came up back in 1995 with the city, and we stepped aside to allow them to adjust the boundaries for Brushy Fork. Working with the Development Officer at that time, I can't remember who it was, we were all involved as Public Service District at home. And therefore, this boundary adjustment that I have a copy of here, took in the entire, not Brushy Fork, it took in the entire western section of the county. So that's why we, yeah, when we started this project, we were not aware that that wasn't in our territory.
Originally, it was.
And, yeah.
Okay, so Sam, Sam will be, go ahead.
I have one more question. What, what is the projected cost of the city's project, and where's it gonna be funded by?
I think Sam has preliminary estimates as to how much, because I think they initially were looking at serving Quarter H Tire at one point, and I know he has some costs in regards to that. We were looking, personally, Region Seven was focusing on the economic development side of serving Fink Run because of the opportunity to retain or create jobs, and there's some economic development funds within the Small Cities Block Grant Program that would qualify in that area, because we have already done some preliminary research to see if it would qualify. And we believe it does, as far as providing jobs or retaining jobs for low and moderate income folks. They base it on poverty rates established by census, and we've already looked at that, that particular area within that specific block group. And that was one avenue that we were going to consider.
Right, at present, the city has not constructed any collection system, basically to serve a lot of the customers in the area that they've extended the line, extended the line to pick up many trailer park in Hampton Inn, but they have never, is a design system for this involved in this?
This technical side of it, Terry, I don't know, that's a Sam question.
Because there's no collection system of what you're ongoing. You're specifically picking up certain customers, and ours is a collection system.
It would pick up everyone along the way. Well, that, that'd be a good question to ask Sam, as to how, how fully utilized that line is. Because I know that we have the same problem with this high-speed internet going to Brooks Hill, to the library, Curry Library, but so far, no one along the way can hook onto it. Now supposedly, somewhere down the line, they're gonna be able to, but the grant money was to get it to libraries, and I think that's an important question. Well, you think Sam would be back next Thursday, we could invite him?
Certainly, I think Sam would be available.
That'd be my suggestion that we...
I'll move that we defer decision on the Public Service District's request pending a hearing with Mr. Ludlow.
Then we'll, if you come back, Terry, next Thursday, then we'll ask Sam to come, and then we can ask some of these questions that apparently he can answer.
Let me take a look at the time, since everybody's here.
Okay.
Give them a time.
That's the same day as the public hearing on the annexation.
About 11 o'clock.
That will be following that.
Following that annexation.
It's a 10:30?
It's a 10:30s.
Yeah.
So 10:45, 11 o'clock.
Does that work for you, Terry? 11 o'clock next Thursday?
10:45 or 11, next Thursday.
Well, and one question you might, I don't know if you can answer today, but maybe next Thursday, is in reference to the, this public notification, as to why there was no one there from the city for that public meeting?
It was advertised.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going with the advertisement, the question is why there was no one there from the city.
I didn't see the advertisement, or I was sitting there.
It was in the record Delta, September 17, 2010. Okay, well, then we will, we'll take this back up again at 11 o'clock?
10:45 or so.
Okay.
Because I don't foresee that annexation taking long.
Okay, all right, that's, that'll be our plan. If there's nothing else on that, if you need to leave, you can, if you want to stay, you can.
Thank you.
I knew which option you'd take, so I gave you two.
It's not that we don't believe what the rest of the day is important, we just cut out the things today. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. 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 else, buddy? Anything?
No, I have to...
Willie?
We've got, of course, paperwork to take care of, bills and things like that, and Elkins Road PSD, we do have two letters of interest from Jerry Wamsley and Sonny Matthews, and I was working on an email earlier, asking the Elkins Road, and I'll pick a date, mid-February or something like that, for them to respond by, to see if they have any suggestions, or for other people by that time.
Right. And then we'll make a decision based on recommendations, considering all recommendations, and if we don't receive any of them, we'll, we'll make a decision then. It's always good, and we've always asked for PSDs to make recommendations when they had vacancies, and sometimes they have, and sometimes they haven't, but we certainly will consider those recommendations. So if you don't have anything else, we will get started on our paperwork.